Bringing the city council meeting to order on Wednesday, April 12, 2023 at 7:00 PM. We are in person with virtual option by Zoom. May I get a roll call, please?
Borgin here.
You're Charlie here.
Potter here.
Hadrian here.
And please stand for the flag salute. Thank you. Let's go ahead and start with public comment. Do we have anybody on the sign in board? Mr. Ross? Ms. Pam Curse, do you have a public comment? Mr. Jay Dispro, do you have public comments?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Jay Dispro, 515 East Main Street. Mayor, Council, my concern is the lack of availability of the agenda for this meeting. We're not available online except for maybe a couple hours ago. And the lack of a package totally for the public just happened to be at this meeting, which I think is kind of contrary to the open meetings law that the state has. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robert Davis.
Yes, ma'am, mayor. My name's Robert Davis, 212 North Maple Street. And Jay just took all my wind out of my sails by saying exactly what I was going to say. So thank you so much.
Ms. Patty Perrin.
So I want to address something that happened a couple months ago or two or three months ago, whatever. And I just haven't had the opportunity. I was out one week or one month and other things came up. So this is in regards to the speed study with the sheriff's trailer that was up in front of the school. The chief, at the end of addressing this, indicated that we don't really have an issue with speeding at town. So when I got this, however many pages of speeds, I was going through it. And immediately I noticed that there were multiple speeds, same speeds, you know, different ones, three, four at a time that were identical in a row. And they were in different numbers with the same types of speeds all through this entire report. So not knowing how the trailer works, I called the sheriff's office and I asked if I could talk to somebody about it, which I did, I got a call back. He set up an appointment so I could go in and show him what I had. So he said that the way that this worked, it's not individual speeds that were on this. It was average speeds in five minute increments. So the numbers that are on here, and I'll give you an example. It says a statistic of 152 vehicles went 10 miles an hour through town. And I questioned him on this 11 and 10 mile an hour thing. He said that would have been if the truck, car, whatever, was turning, you know, slowing down to turn. So that's not even a speed that would be a car that's actually going through town. They're going through town for a distance and then they're turning. So being said these are average speeds, I sat down and tried to calculate something that would come up with an average speed. So one of them was I did 20 miles, 30 miles an hour, 25 and 35. The average speed would be 27.5 miles an hour, which in fact states that they're not speeding, really, if it's during, you know, regular, not school time. And then I did another one. There was a 50 mile an hour one on here and the chief stated 150 mile an hour and 160 mile an hour. So for the 50 mile, I did 60, 250s and a 45. And that came up with 51 points, whatever, miles an hour.
Ms. Patty Perrin, you're at three minutes.
Okay, so bottom line is that this, this thing here is not an accurate picture of the vehicles that go through town. We just had an accident up here today. And as soon as the fire truck and the car was out there in the intersection, lo and behold, they started speeding through here again. And it's not a perception like we were told. So I just want it to be known that it's not just me. It's virtually everybody on Highway 47 that I got signatures from and handed to city council and the chief showing that, and I'm going to say 98% because there was only four people that I couldn't get in touch with that are frustrated and fed up with the speeds that go at least on Highway 47. So that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Rocky Losley.
Good evening. The subject that I would like to share very quickly with you has to do with SDCPs. And the point of the fact that these fees are extremely important for the city in, in relationship to development dollars that the city can have to accomplish so much development that we are behind on. And this needs to be taken care of as soon as possible. And I have stated this before that if I had the power, I would declare it an emergency and make it happen. I understand that a study is being accomplished by AKS. I have no idea if there is a date certain on when that, that report and recommendation from them might be completed. But it should be done right away. So if you would appoint me and give an opportunity for the people of my choosing, which would include a counselor and, and a minimum of one department head, perhaps two, and a couple other people that represent other citizens that are not otherwise associated with duties directly with the city. By May the 10th, I would have a report in your hands with a recommendation that you could act upon.
Thank you, Mr. Losley. Ms. Cynthia Thompson, I hope I said that right.
I don't really have anything to say. I was invited because I think you're going to act on possibly adopting the transit development plan. I'm the transit manager for Yemhill County Transit. So I'm here to answer any questions if you have those. But I didn't actually see that on your agenda, so.
Yes, I invited her. I'm going to slide her into my.
Oh, okay.
So then, so if you have any questions, that's what I'm here for.
Perfect, I'm glad you're here, thank you. Any other public comment? Is there anybody online? Please raise your hand or unmute at this time. That would like to speak at public comment. Seeing none at this time, we will go ahead and close public comments. And begin with presentations, planning commission.
Hi, Ken Moore. I live out of town, so my address matters. 23890 Northwest Mount Richmond Road. Damn hell, the right zip, but anyway. Last planning commission, we continued the, boy, I am really that bold. I don't see that. Okay. Last planning commission, we had a continuance because Walt Menon Hall couldn't beat at the meeting. And we just felt it was essential to have his counsel on this application for the gas station. So we just continued that. We continued that, that public hearing until tomorrow, actually, at 7:00. 6:30, I think we moved it up. But we use that extra time to talk about this thing we've been talking about last time I was here. Rural development and, I mean, excuse me, downtown development, economic development. And we had Jenny Morrison on the line. Maybe is anybody from YDA on the call tonight? Guess not. All right, so they won't be able to correct me if I'm wrong. But. Is that Jenny?
I don't think that's the same that was overcast.
Jenny Morrison. What, the chief had put together a kind of a charter for the planning commission to be the, the entity that would appoint committees to look into economic development and downtown historic designations. Did I get that right, chief? Yeah. And that was approved by city council. And so suddenly, wow, it's us. Well, what are we going to do? So we started talking about that. We said, well, the downtown association is, yeah, the downtown association is doing that. And Jenny was, and I called up Kara after the meeting and kind of talked about, hey, would you guys like to be that committee? As, as long as you're responsive and we like what you're doing because we can appoint and, you know, just so it's working out. And she said, okay, I'll go to the rest of the folks, which we should get familiar with these names. Kara Weber, Jenny Morrison, Phil Higgins, and Anita Borges, or is it downtown association? Those are the people that are already somewhat up to speed in this whole process. If you remember, there was a grant to hire the rural development initiative. Mary Bosch came to town and held a number of meetings at the height, I think there were six meetings. People talked about what they have vision for the city. Were you there? Remember this? And the, the downtown association kind of grew out of that. The one thing that they could do, and Mary said, this Mary was a, she's a guru of rural economic development in the, in the RDI. She's done this over 100 towns in Oregon. She said, what you need to do is build community first. And so that's why they're having things like the Beverly Cleary event. They have Christmas and they have, you know, different, different downtown organization events. So people kind of come out, get to know each other, get excited about, yeah, let's, let's really do this. The development, the rural development initiative is a, is a nonprofit. And it's, you know, volunteers. And they're funded by, they're funded by grants and donations. And so anyway, that's what the downtown association is up to. They've recently joined the, they're a member of the Oregon Main Street Network, which is also a nonprofit. I noticed from their budgeting that they get private donations and the government seems to match them. They had $32 million in 2022 from the government and $32 million, what, public money? And $32 million from private people. And then may make grants available, training and technical assistance for economic development. And some of our people have already received some of that, our downtown associate people have received that training. That grant is by any, every two years, on the odd years, you can apply for this, this grant that they, that they can give out to various cities. So Kara's going to talk to her, the people, and make sure, yes, we want to be that official entity so that can happen. The historic downtown, historic district research and designation, Robert has expressed interest in that. And we're in conversation about how that may go forward with him and maybe some other folks that want to come around him. Or that would be a piece of also what the downtown association does and Robert would help them do that. So that piece is a little bit up in the air because Robert seems to have that experience right now and how he would work with the downtown association or what that would look like, we're not sure.
Just to add to that, oh, your newest member to your, your board came to me.
Sean?
No, female.
Sue.
Sue, Sue came to me and asked if she could join me in working the historic section. Great. And she says, based on her experience with her two historic buildings, she's got plenty of experience too.
Okay, so what those look like is I might have a conversation with those two and kind of recommend to the rest of the commission. The commission might ask them some questions and then we say, okay, you're the, you're the folks that do this. They're, they're the committee. And, and then we'll give them a place on the agenda every month for what you're doing, how you're doing, what you need. They would report and it would kind of give them a reason to show up and have something done by the next month. Kind of like you do with the, I don't know, the planning commission and water people and all that. So that's the idea.
Sounds like a great plan. Thank you.
Mayor, may I real quick? Well, I'm keeping you notes, it's difficult, they kind of know voices, but the decorum is important to people, not just to speak openly, but then if they are going to, when asked to, to identify where they are. What we can remind people of.
Okay.
Thank you.
So again, if you speak before the council, please identify your name and your address. And even if it's Mount Richmond, that's okay.
Thank you. One more thing I did finish, one, it's brief. In talking to Kara, she said, we need this vision to work toward. And her idea, and maybe you agree, is that the city manager is kind of the person to have the authority and the background. And maybe this person comes from other cities where he did it there and he sees how we're different and how we're the same and how he can, she can help us create a vision with inputs in the community. And then we'd have something to really bite on to. So we hope we get a city manager soon. That's my desire.
Well, I do want to introduce you to Ross Schultz. He is our interim city administrator and he is filling in in that capacity for us until we do find somebody on a permanent basis. And so you can please.
Well, you look like you might have some experience with this. Well, this is great.
We're really blessed to have him.
Can I get your phone number?
Sorry.
Is it 555-555?
Thank you.
Is that all, Mr. Moore?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Water advisory committee. Hi, Brian.
Brian Jensen, 225 North Olive. You, since it didn't get in the package, it came out for council. We were short and brief.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
I can email it to you too, if you'd like. Water advisory did meet on the 28th of March. We met with a few of the water districts representatives. We talked about rates and just general information of the district's concerns. This time, the committee has no recommendations on water rates. We've run into a lot of questions that we have that we're still trying to obtain answers to. We did submit some questions to Ross on some information. And we'd like to have talked with Jason, try and set up for a couple of us to meet with Tim Tice to go over his presentation. There's some things that come up that we have questions on. And so we'd like to get those answered before we can come back to the council and really give any recommendations on water rates and anything going on there. So that's kind of where the committee's at at this time. So we will meet again the 25th of April. We both have some answers to our questions before then so that we can have a better discussion on that and give some recommendations. So Jason, anything I missed or?
No, I think you covered it. I know that a lot of questions.
And you met with some of the water districts?
Yes, we did.
And did they express any concerns, anything that they would like to see different for their services?
They had concerns over the rates based on what Tam had presented. And there were some questions asked. The numbers were kind of put out that they were not totally correct. And they've been corrected. But it just brought up a lot of questions on, on things that we need to fine tune and get answered. Or we can really give a good recommendation on where we should be. So that's, hopefully we can get that maybe by the end of the month at our meeting, come up with some better recommendations that maybe help everybody in the community. You know, we've heard a lot of concerns about the rates, what Tim proposed, about usage, so on. I think we should have some more better data on what the usage is. By then, we've got the new meters that are in. So we're just looking at mine. I didn't see a big difference, but you know, we should have.
Just to add to that, Tim did email to me allowances or units. But then, so he has that information now.
Excellent.
Listen, our discussion with Tim, so that's, if we're asked, if there's any questions.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Looking forward to hearing more. Yemhill Downtown Association, I don't see anybody in here. Is there anybody online for the downtown association? If so, please unmute yourself and, and go ahead and speak. This time, we will move to Yemhill Neighborhood Association. I believe we have a representative.
Yes, ma'am. Robert Davis here again. Sorry for the, my clutterness here. I didn't seem to be real prepared today. But the first thing I wanted to talk about was our disaster preparedness meeting, the 22nd of this month, given by our local police officer, A.J. Miller, who will be doing the disaster preparedness for, or called mass shooting in, in our point of view, or run, hide and fight in other people's points of view. But anyway, it's only an hour and a half course with a half an hour of questions if there are any. As I said, it will be at the church up the street here on Laurel. And it will be at 2:00 on Saturday on the 22nd. So I'd like all of you to attend, but if you can't, and Shays already said he's working, so he won't be there. But maybe some of the, our council might show up. And in addition to that, YNA is also looking at next month for disaster medical class given next month. And we're working with Stop the Bleed, which is a familiar adage to a lot of people who work in the school system. I know Kate is familiar with that, along with run, hide and fight. So we're not telling her anything new. But for those who haven't attended any of these meetings, it's a great opportunity to learn something quick that might save your life and might be of value to you and your family.
And what day is that on?
That's April 22nd at 2:00 PM.
No, the disaster medical is.
Oh, disaster medical hasn't been finalized yet. We're still working with that group to find a teacher who's willing to come from Salem to Yemhill to give that course. So I was promised I would know by this week, so I have two more days left.
Will you let city hall know so they can get in on the announcements on?
I certainly will. Yeah, thank you, mayor. And by the way, I want to thank whoever it was that put up our, our disaster preparedness for this month on the website. I just gave it to the city a couple days ago and it's already on the website. So thank you so much for that. Changing gears here, there's a couple of things that we talked about in March that I would like to remind the council or the city about. And that's putting the CIP on the city website. It is important that the citizens of Yemhill know what the city is looking to do and for them to realize where their money is going as those items get completed. And so like Jason knows, as he finishes, puts a line through it and says, complete, and we all cheering for it. So in addition to that, in March, we asked that the city hold a business meeting to review the CIP status and to at least do that once a year. That isn't asking a whole lot. And my last reminder is the housing capacity analysis. If it hasn't been done, that we talked about last month, it should be done. So other than that, I'm all, I'm all done.
Thank you very much. Move to unfinished business, update on three cross valves, Jason Wofford, Public Works.
So we're going to be with John from AKS, Matt Pittman from Lawson Corp. Tomorrow at 9:00 AM to discuss cost and possible shutdown and how we're going to allocate and abandon the current crosses and Ts that are on Highway 240. So it's pretty high level. We're gearing up to get that project started by next year. It's being created in our budget currently, so we're moving pretty quick with that one.
Can you kind of give us a brief summary of what three cross valves means?
Yeah, so, so outside of the general description of those valves, I'll just kind of educate everybody on what's going on. So last year off of 240, we had a valve that mechanical, the mechanical components in the valve didn't work. So what we had to do is we had to go to various valves down 240, bomb, cedar, the hemlock. We isolated a hemlock. The unknown factors was that valve isolated the intermediate school. But that was the only way we could get that water to stop from flowing. So we had roughly four to five valves in between that span that did not operate. So we have no way currently to shut down water out to our water districts and out to that point without shutting the ice down or intermediate, excuse me. So what we're looking to do is get those isolation points back and running and up and working. So that's what brought this about. So when we talk crosses, we're just talking simple gate valves within the system.
Thank you, that, that was helpful. Is that it?
That was it.
You want to go to the next one? RFP update for Third Street Water Project?
Yeah, there again, positive stuff. I think I mentioned this last meeting, but the survey is completed. Our surveying has been done on that project. We've gotten rough numbers from engineering. I can't kind of tip my hat to that, just in case there's anybody out there who wants to bid on that project. But it's doable within this year's budget. AKS is wanting to kick that off around December, early December. early December. Right now, we're trying to work with our current contractors onsite and mobilized to start utilizing them to put in that infrastructure. So that plan is shovel ready. It's ready to go. It's part of our CIP list and according to financial admin, city, city manager, that financing is there. So we're going to get it done.
Have we put it out to bid? Is that what?
Not yet. We're going to put that out to bid in May.
May, okay.
So we'll have all those bids back by next budget year.
So by June-ish, July, we'll have those back and we'll be able to hire somebody and get it completed by December?
Yeah.
Well, that's excellent. And is that going to be in conjunction with the development?
We're trying to utilize their contractor. Due to the fact, like I stated, they are mobilized, that takes that cost away.
Yeah. Saves dollars. Smart thinking. Thank you. Anything else on there?
No, not in regards to that.
And then budget review, budget calendar for twenty three, twenty four budget process. Mr. Schultz?
Yes, pretty straightforward. You see a copy of the budget calendar in your packet. I think the biggest issue is I'd like to see the first budget meeting on the nineteenth of this month. And I think that's hopeful that everybody can get here for that. And past that, that will be up to the budget committee when they want to meet again, et cetera. So that nineteenth would be a presentation of the budget and budget message.
Okay, and that's next Wednesday. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that overlaps with what was scheduled to be the planning commission. Has that changed?
I think so. Kim?
Mr. Wong.
Help.
We're not having another meeting this month, correct? We're just having the one tomorrow.
That's right.
So no planning commission meeting next Wednesday? Okay, that's helpful.
Yeah.
Then get messy.
I'm sorry, Kim helped me with that one, so. My bad. And the rest of the dates that are on there flexible, of course, but I'd like to have the proposed budget and budget meetings in April. Do the approved and the public hearing in May. And then the adoption in June, instead of trying to do it all in a best time, I think that gives the citizens more time to actually look at the information and make comments. So.
More opportunity, definitely. Thank you very much.
You bet. If there's any questions, glad to answer. By the way, the ads are already out for the nineteenth, so I'm really hoping.
Of course, right.
I'll be there.
Yes.
All right, new business. Appoint Ross Schultz as Budget Officer for the twenty twenty three budget. I think that's a easy decision. Is there any council discussion? Anybody want to make comment on that making the decision on that?
Other than I think it's a great idea.
Me too.
Okay, let's get a motion then.
I make a motion. We appoint Ross Schultz as our Budget Officer for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget.
Hadid in second.
A vote, please.
SBI.
Oregon I.
H R I.
All right.
Hadid I.
Sorry.
Thank you, Rob.
Backup generator for reservoir, Mr. Wofford.
Yeah. Put that backup generator on to control our telemetry when we have generator bumps or power outages. It's a great tool, great asset. As we went through this last year with some of the snowstorms and windstorms and the P G outages, we found that just the operational aspect of physically going up there and operating off the back of the utility trucks generator was not sufficient enough for the general public and its needs and desires with the water distribution. So we've implemented a Generac system that kicks on and sends us telemetry and sends us a signal and so we can actually navigate the reservoir without any outages or any system bumps.
So it tells you when it goes into action?
Correct.
So you then don't have to worry about it?
Exactly.
You don't have to send a person out to address it?
No, 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 it it. He still has me at one point.
Nice try, man.
Not the back of the truck.
Okay. But just after the reservoir situation was pretty hectic last year. I mean, granted, we went through some operational practices and everybody was, you know, pretty honed in on what to do. But onboarding the Generac system frees up for treatment at the plant and not having to use that extra body to be up at the reservoir, navigating telemetry and sending signal back via phone or walkie or whatever it may have been. So.
And reservoir interpretation means water storage tanks?
Correct, correct. So not a lot of people are familiar with it. So basically they sent the reservoir sends the water plant a signal saying, hey, I'm full or I need more. Is there any more that I need to add to that?
Also lets the snow flow, what's going in, and what's leaving the reservoirs and yeah, just when the power goes out. The radio signal even will stop, so we don't have to see anything on our scanner or we lose all numbers and everything. So we're basically blind from reservoir.
So without the backup generator, you had to go up there every two hours? Is that what you said?
Roughly. So a lot of back and forth and seeing what was going on.
A lot.
So yeah, just to say the obvious that that gives us eyes. So it's it was a small expenditure, but definitely.
The backup generator is your backup.
There again, just, you know, redundancy in the system, keeping it all to speed.
Do we have to purchase it or did we have? We have to get?
Yeah, we have to purchase it and, you know, we're working with GPEC right now and just kind of working and navigating through what the best system is and just getting it wired in.
And there's funding for it, obviously. Perfect. Where'd it go? Anything else on that?
No.
Twenty three Yamhill Police Department, five Yamhill Police Department accreditation. Yamhill Police Department accreditation, Gray Craven. Chief Craven, please tell us what all that means.
I would use larger words when Jason just did.
Yeah, thank you.
So back in, you fell over. The police department began the accreditation process, which is where I've been taking over in the position that I am or the chief of trees, but was starting that initiative. However, when I assumed this role, it was too much of a challenge for me, and there was a there is a cost involved for it. So I worked through the process, worked through all of the requirements for accreditation, which are still in place. However, there's a process that's required for accreditation that you have to be with the accreditation alliance, which requires a fee. And then they work through, do the audit and accredit an organization. So because I'm still too busy to do it, I spoke with Corporal Dan Cleve and Officer Miller, who are taking on those roles being the lead in working with the Oregon Accreditation Alliance. To help the Yamhill Police Department. So it's about a year long process, just getting set up to do the accreditation. Yeah, so we're going to move forward with that and then work with them, which requires a contract with the Oregon Accreditation Alliance. And I then with that, ask them to do it, test them with that, and then they agree to it. And I think they're still in agreement after looking to all the properties are, but it also was commented because I have everything I had done still in electronic format. So that will help with Officer Miller, who I think has kind of taken the lead lead of the lead to task, his task with taking that on. So it'll be a fun project. Thank you.
So the two officers are acting as accredited manager for the project?
Yes.
A big project.
Yeah, we're even with all the stuff that he already did.
Way to go. Okay, any questions on that from council? The accreditation, what does that do for the police department?
It's professionally certified as violent, but it also helps with any questions. So I know that in the past, there has been conversation with legislation that's going to require, and the larger agencies are all now required to be accredited. It's going to trickle down to the smaller agencies as well down the road, but I always like to be ahead of the curve. I've been want to do this, but I haven't been able to have the time to do it. So it's something that has been on the forefront of my mind all along. And again, the processes are in place. And mind you, the accreditation process will be the same. It's just that we'll have a certificate that shows that we're accredited. They do products every year, three years, they'll open it and you have to do it.
And it's onsite that they do that?
Yes. It also helps with brand funding for a lot more federal brands. And it's something that I feel that all professional organizations share that, not just for police departments.
Well, and I will also say that in case there's ever a lawsuit or a legal issue and accredited organization fares a lot better than one that's not accredited. So financially incentive as well. So thank you, Ross.
And so previously, the the fees or the dues were an issue. Has that been resolved?
So again.
Previously, the fees or dues were an issue back in two thousand and twelve or sixteen?
Well, the issue because I had been doing it for a couple, three, four years. And I was chasing my tail because I would get about halfway through the process. And then they would want to come in to do the audit and I would have to start over. But I would be through the process and mind you, the sign of this being made a first of it, there was two of us here when I was trying to do that. And it wasn't something that was feasible. But we were still paying at the time, it's a little over five hundred dollars. We were paying that cost and not being accredited.
And that's an annual cost.
Yes. Yeah. So I made the executive decision then to stop paying for something that we're not going to achieve. So for budgetary, I made the decision to stop doing that. And however, now that fee is basically doubled. But all along, we have been a part of Lexible, which is where we have our policies through and having that process will assist tremendously because we follow those policies. So it's just showing proof that we're in the in the courts with all those policies through the accreditation.
Excellent. And you've resolved the the funding opportunity for that? You know how to pay more now?
Towards that, yes. I can budget it in right now. I haven't told Ross that yet, but I can budget it in right now, but I want to wait. I haven't signed the agreement yet because I want to see where Officer Miller and Corporal Dan Cleve will be with moving forward with the process of paying for something we're not doing yet. So we're going to communicate that more this month.
Will you put accredited agency on the side of your cars?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then we'll have, because there's a requirement to do that. And then we'll have something also with our signature, not the whole page thing, but just like a little something that was where you're creating. So there's a lot of things that will be required to do. And what would be that is.
Excellent. Very good. This is good. This is a good thing. Big project.
Beautiful.
Yeah. Thank you for doing that, though. I think we're worth it. Any questions?
No, no.
No? Thank you, Chief Craven. Consent agenda, the financial statement to current. I want to highlight current.
Right?
That's a good, that's awesome. Yeah, I saw that current and that what? And then I had to go and actually see it for myself.
Make a motion.
Your Honor, if I may.
Please.
I'd like to add, staff requested the consent agenda.
Yes.
Staff recommends council approve the contract prepared by our attorney as discussed in executive session of April twelfth.
So the one we discussed today?
Yes.
You asked that we approve the contract discussed in executive session?
Yes.
Is there a discussion for that?
No. So you need that separately, Ross, or that's to be?
I'd like to add it to the consent agenda.
Okay, so by parting that, it approves that as well. Perfect. I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Can we include the water advisory committee minutes since, do we approve those as well?
Yes, that's included in the consent agenda.
So my ones over there with the meeting and the water advisory committee, know if they're accurate?
Well, I mean, it's or we're proving that the minutes have been completed. You can approve that they are accurate, absolutely.
Can you give me a page, Marsha?
It's just the water advisory military included. I guess it's the first time we've.
It includes a regular city minutes and it includes water advisory.
Are you just making a comment, Marsha, or just?
Yeah, we just never had them and oh, for us to vote on them. No.
Gotcha, okay.
We've never had them for us to vote on them as well to approve them.
So let's just then do a consent agenda for the financial statement and the contract approval. And then we'll do this council minutes separately. So can I get a motion for a financial statement to current and contract approval?
I make a motion to approve the financial statement to current and the contract approval.
As amended.
As amended.
Hadid in second.
A vote, please.
Oregon I.
H R I.
All right.
Hadid I.
And now approval of council minutes. We'll do each one separately. Can I get a motion for the regular session on March twenty eighth minutes? Does anybody need to review these before we vote on any of these? Ms. Ransky, are you good? Ms. R. Charlie?
I'm good.
Do you need to review before we vote?
No, I'm good.
And you're up, Marsha. So you bid.
For the regular session, March eighth.
I make a motion. We approve the minutes from the regular session, March twenty eighth.
March eighth.
Or March eighth, sorry, looking the wrong one.
Oregon second.
Vote, please.
SBI.
Oregon I.
H R I.
All right.
Hadid I.
Need a motion for city council special meeting water study on March twentieth, twenty three. Any questions or review? Can I get a motion, please?
Make a motion. We approve the meeting minutes from the city council special meeting water study in March twentieth. H R second.
Can I get a vote for approval of the minutes?
SBI.
Oregon I.
H R I.
All right.
Hadid I.
I make a motion. We approve the water advisory committee minutes from March twenty eighth, two thousand twenty three.
Hadid second.
Some question on that. We're approving the minutes as written, but we weren't there, is what you're saying.
Right. You guys weren't there. So usually you would have to abstain because you weren't there to know.
And they were, that they were accurate. Oh, so are we approving the minutes as presented to us? Or are we approving the minutes as written, please?
I think if you, water advisory committee minutes and a minute, I would say as submitted.
As submitted?
You okay?
I make a motion to approve the water water advisory committee minutes as submitted from March twenty eighth, two thousand twenty three.
Hadid second.
A vote, please.
SBI.
Oregon I.
H R I.
All right.
Hadid I.
By the way, I do want to comment again. These are the best minutes I've ever seen written. Thank you, Chief Craven, for preparing the meeting minutes for all of these meetings. Very well done.
Mayor. I think Kim had a concern.
No, we just, I just wanted to add that we were just trying to provide information and keeping everybody in the loop on everything that's going.
Yes, thank you.
Which is excellent. Consent agenda may not be where we put it, though. Maybe we'll talk about, or Ross, maybe direct us on how to place that. Department reports. Administration. Mr. Schultz?
I'm afraid I don't have much of a report. Uh, I'm afraid I don't have much of a report for you today, uh, this being my first council meeting at all. Uh, I have been splitting my time particularly between uh, budget and. I've been working on grants, so uh, today I spoke with Shannon from the city of uh. I'm sorry, I'm new.
No, it's okay.
I'm working with staff, I think they've done a great job uh. Working on getting the financials up to date, as you see in your packet, uh, they should all. Uh, the budget's taken probably. Forty hours in over the last week, just that alone, so um, looking forward to that. With that, Chief Grayden knows more about what's going on here than I would be with some people, so. So far it's working.
You know, I'm looking forward to the budget uh, committee this year, I've never looked forward to the budget committee before. And I'm looking forward to it this year because I have great faith that it's going to be the most accurate ever.
Well, that's a little intimidating.
But that's my faith in in you and your ability to set us on the straight and narrow, so I'm just saying a grateful.
Thank you.
Anything else for administration? Anybody else for administration? Okay, we'll move on, uh, police department, police report. We have what you presented here, um, the police statistics.
Yes, anyone have any questions? I I would call your attention to the statistic for Chief Gravens time on their uh.
Fifty one hours worked? Yeah. In a month, yeah. Need to sleep. You do need to sleep, you know, bling bling. Anything else to report?
Yes, a couple of things of importance, so April is picture assault awareness month, and I feel it is child abuse prevention. So if you see that you have done. There's years before placing the pinwheels out in Zion and also the ribbon. And then wearing different ribbons also, pinwheel and stuff. But for me, if you've noticed, I always wear this one. Because it's a bunch of conversation and talking with people, and it's something I'm very passionate about. So if if I only talk about is is child abuse prevention. Ribbons that you see around here, we have a little bit of child abuse prevention, we're gonna make some more ribbons for next year that have the color. More long lines, as I've told this, it was another guy, so I don't know the different shades or blue and. What color is it? Teal. We're gonna get some teal ribbons, so that we can post those out as well, not making light of the subject, but just. My, I'm not coloring it, it's only always all colors. I'm being educated on that, but just want people to know, it is posted on the website, there's some flyers. Henderson House is a wonderful organization that I've worked with for many, many years. And there are uh, some things that I post on the website as well, of programs that they have. Things to get involved. Um, I have worked with Trudy Ed's house on a number of occasions for the last twenty five years. You know, the great organization, yeah, they're gonna be doing a run on their motorcycles. Just to kind of do a a commemorative thing, and they're gonna be coming around through Yamp Hill and. And Officer Miller is gonna sit and put that on the, what's the? Twenty second, it's gonna be a busy day. On the twenty second before you go to the bell stop, Roberts. So there's gonna be, uh, there's gonna be motorcycle ride, that they're gonna be riding around Yammill County. Uh, for child abuse prevention. So two great events, I um, commemorate the the fact that there's a lot of people involved with this and. And that have been over the years, great networking. So if anyone has any questions, we have flyers up front, or they can. However, you do that, because like, understanding of technology, downloading them. I'm learning WordPress, which is on, but downloading them from our website. And I have learned that what does happen um, in learning WordPress, everybody interacted.
No, thank you, thanks.
They'd be having a teacher, I learned it. But with WordPress, um, what happens, I mean, with our IT, because what happens is when you throw something. For whatever reason, there's a limit, so things like drop off. Have to go back in and refresh them. So there was some, I guess, I'm medically trained, so I could help with people get that upset about not being able to see it online. But it drops off, so I have to go back in and and refresh them, I wish I could just sit there and look at the. City of Yammill webpage. And see what's on there all the time, but I don't have time to do that, I apologize. If that's something you would like me to do, I'd be more than happy not to. But so when I have it on there, I do look to see, because I have to refresh it, I'm working with IT to try to figure that out. So if anybody knows WordPress, please let me know. Then um, I I apologize, I'm not making light of it, but for some reason they drop off. So like for the agenda, I got word that it dropped off, so I just went back down, refreshed it again and brought it back around. But did post, so I try to keep it on that, but I can't always do that, um. So it's a fun learning curve, Angie. And I was gonna say something else, and I forgot.
All right, public works, Jason Walker.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to clear the part of Cynthia from Yammill Transit, just to. Appendix G, correct? Is it appendix G, is that what we're here to discuss?
I don't know if I know exactly, I had, Eric had sent out a letter, are you referring to the? The email about you adopting the transit development plan into your transportation system plan?
Yes.
So then really, you you pretty much adopt the whole plan, I mean, there's an appendices document and then there's a regular one. And we had sent this out, the plan was actually adopted in two thousand eighteen, uh, or, you know, developed and adopted. And then we had sent letters out to all the cities, and there's ten cities in Yammill County. Saying, you know, it might be a good idea, because most cities are required to have a transportation system plan, so usually there's a transit chapter. This way you can just adopt this plan as your transit, public transportation chapter, and you don't have to write one. Well, you shouldn't, because really, Yammill County Transit is your transit system, you're. You're part of the district by resolution from clear back in two thousand seven. So it's really the entire plan, you just would adopt it, I don't know what, when, if you have a transportation system plan, which is more about roads, bikes, everything. Usually you're required to update those every. T S Ps is it every ten years, and transit plans are typically five to seven years. But I know the T S N B is, uh. You might know, Ken, do you know how often you have to do your transportation system plan? I know it's a state law, but it's. So I have no idea where you're at in that process, but.
Twenty years.
Okay, so, well, then good, you'll have one chapter done, then you want to. So I think that's what you wanted, but I am happy to answer any other questions you might have about transit. Or transit related questions, and I will make one pitch also, since I have the floor for five minutes, um, is. That Ken Moore, sits on the Yammill County Transit Advisory Committee and has done a fabulous job for. A long time, I've, I can't believe I'm saying this, but I think I've been in Yammill County for, you know, it's going on past eight years, which is. Hard to believe, and um, Ken has been on the committee, but he said he's thinking of moving on when his term ends, so if there's anybody. In the city of Yammill on this council or anywhere else, it would like to serve on that committee. Please reach out to me, I'd love to have some of representation from your city, if you would like to. So I may have gone way off out of my lane, but um.
It 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 from my understanding, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Cynthia. So what what we're basically introducing is anytime we have developments or any kind of. Blocks to our system, a bit or.
Yes, okay, I need to clarify, so in, one of the reasons why we wanted cities to adopt these plans, and a key element, is appendix. G, I think you're right, and what that is, is it's suggestions for development. Code language that you could incorporate to make whatever you're doing in development, make it more transit friendly. So let's say you have a new store being built, and you don't know what to ask for, to make it so that there's a good place for a bus to stop and put their lift down or whatever. So there's, there's a chapter in this document and in the appendices of the document. That gives you recommended suggested language that you could add, and you could adopt, you could adopt it or not adopt it, but it's our. Recommendation of, this is good development code language for making any development you build more transit friendly. So you could look at it, it'll have, it has, it has different options, so it might take a little bit of um. Review from possibly your, you know, your planning uh, board or whatever, but. You could adopt it as it is, and it would just give you some guidance if you have new development. Especially since you're talking about economic development and things like that, it could be, could be helpful. Um, because it's usually typically something that a lot of times, um. Well, even even smaller cities, you know, I mean, even medium sized cities, a lot of times don't have great language in there. That's very transit supportive, um, and usually it's not, it's not, it's not big things, but you know, you could, you could read it and. And see what you think, it's totally up to you as a council or to your planning board, but what you would want to adopt.
And once again, this is at design level.
Yes, at design. So I'll give you a good example, um, there's something that ODOT's doing that annoys me, well, a lot of things ODOT doesn't annoy me, but. But I won't go off into that too much, um, a lot of smaller cities like like in Yammill County, your main street is a highway. And so in Newburgh, you know, you have Highway ninety nine, they just built that new big development there across from the hospital, right? So I didn't actually, I don't get copies when those developments are taking place, I mean, I've gone, I ask, that's another thing. You could also put us on your list and then send us, if you have designs coming in through your, through, to to build something, you can send us a copy. And we could comment on, hey, we happen to have to stop a block away from there, you might wanna do this, so we could make suggestions. So we had asked folks that would do that, so Newburgh is the only city currently that send us their design review. Types of things, so, but I didn't get the one from that, that that development, because it probably happened. A long time ago, because it takes a long time to build something that that large. But what ended up happening is the standard is they're doing these new catchment areas for runoff, water runoff. And so that must be in ODOT's overall design standards, or, you know, it's on a state highway, but there's literally no place for a bus to stop. Put out a wheelchair left, or even an ambulatory person getting off the bus, that I'm gonna have to let them off in the dirt. Or into a tree, because now they've put all these, you know, landscaping there. So the only place we can stop is we have to go up to like the next street and let someone out in the middle of a street. You know, like a cross street, and then of course, people don't want you to really stop right in the middle of the street, but it's literally the only place we can let a person out. To board or deboard, and so those things like that, um, it's just silly, I mean, ODOT should really know better than that. So I, I complained to them and we'll, you know, we'll see, but luckily, Newburgh, because they sent the. Uh, they had a big change to that development, so I was able to give input and suggest that they make. A change and fix that problem, and we showed them where the stop is. I will add one more thing, because it is taking forever, but putting up bus stop signs and markings. I've actually been working on this since I started almost, but it's embarrassing to say that. But finally, I think this summer, phase one of bus stop signs and markings will. Will actually have some bus stop signs in McMinnville and on on, maybe not all of ODOT highways. Because it depends on if they're going to allow us to permit them all. I want them to give us one permit for the entire, whichever highway it is, so it's Highway eighteen. I worked in Camby for a while, and they literally made us permit each sign individually, took three years to put up, you know, very few signs. It's totally silly, but there's, you know, a lot of bureaucracy you have to work through, so the good news is. You don't have a lot of stops in your community, so most likely you will see bus, actual new bus stop signs going up soon. And um, shelters won't probably take place there like in phase three, because when we have to put in a new shelter. A lot of times we have to get easements and we have to, you know, pour concrete and do that sort of thing, and um, so those are less difficult. So what's going in first are what I call the little, for the sort of easiest stops to put in. But if you have any thoughts or comments or suggestions about, you know, location, the stops, all of our stops are on the website. And they are all um, geocoded, so, so if you went into the Yammill County Transit site, you could look in Yammill, you can see exactly where the stop is. Have a little bus symbol there, but when you go out on the street, you're not gonna see a sign, because they aren't up yet, but you can see where it's supposed to be. And um. I think I lost my train of thought, but. But the good news is that, like that Newburgh um, situation, they could have gone online and seen where the stop was. And then realized, oh, we have a bus stop there, we need to make sure that there's a way for people to get on a bus. But obviously, that's not their highest priority, so. So, so unfortunately, you know, we have a staff of two, you know, in the administrative side, so it's not like we have a lot of. Staff, administrative staff to spend a lot of time doing that, we contract all the services out to First Transit. Which just got bought out by Trans Deb, and uh, but you shouldn't really see much of a change, just a new name. Um, I think that's, that covers it.
And for me, yeah, thanks, Cynthia, and you know, for me personally, you know, transit was always kind of a. We lacked there, we didn't really involve them, so you know, this being brought to my attention, you know, we can at least, at the very least. Submit our plans at the design level and see what we have to alter, but I thought, you know, thank you, Cynthia and.
Oh, one other thing, if you ever, or, you know, I know you have so much extra time to read things, but um, in the plan. One of the goals for smaller communities is, you you have a fixed route that goes to Hillsborough that travels to, in case you don't know this, it's the Route thirty three. That goes through uh, through the city of Yammill. But we did set aside funding, because we got new state funding, and we tried to keep it as open and flexible as possible. So the smaller community, if you wanted to do something different, maybe you want a medical shuttle, or you wanna shopper shuttle, or you want. Dial ride, or whatever, that you just need to talk to, talk, you need to plan amongst yourselves, tell me what you would like. And I can tell you, I'll send to Jason how many hours we set aside in the plan, because we did a long range plan, saying we're gonna set aside this much. Uh, a lot, this many hours to each small city, so that you can create what would work for you. Um, and we would help you do that, I don't have a lot of time to go out and do a lot of planning with the smaller communities, but you get maybe through your planning. Commission or whatever could could talk about that and work on.
Uh, so we have one bus stop in town. Are they planning on doing anything from here towards Newburgh? I've been asked multiple times.
You know, it's in, it it actually came up when we were doing the plan, we did a lot of outreach, and it is, I think it's in the long range. Plans, but you know, since COVID, everything's sort of. I almost feel like I need to do a new plan, which just makes me wanna be sick, but, because it's a lot, but things have changed, if you know what I mean, since COVID. So we are actually looking at all of our list of projects, and some of them, the Yammill County Transit Advisory Committee has moved up as higher priority. Than what actually shows up in the plan, so I, so the long answer is, it's, it's still could happen. It isn't currently in our plan in a high priority, but you know, we're pretty open, I know there's a need there, I do, I've heard that, we did hear that from people. They would love to have a way they could go from Yammill, yeah, city of Yammill Carlton, straight to Newburgh, rather than having to go all the way into McMinnville and then back out. So um, so really, it's just a matter of kind of just sending me an email about things like that, and I'll work it into. Conversation with our committee or whatever actions we can take.
In on the committee, that's nice.
Yeah, yeah, you have. We're a lot of. Probably more than he wants to know about.
Well, thank you, Cynthia, very much for your time, appreciate it. Anything else, Jason?
No, I appreciate it, and uh, you know, I guess, you know, to add to that just a little bit, you know, Ross brought to my attention. Like he just shared with us that our T S P plan is twenty years outdated. So it's kind of brought vast kind of conversations, so just something to think about as we move forward. The operations, um, I've been personally generating a design with AKS in regards to Cedar Street storm issues. The operations, um, I've been personally generating a design with A K S in regards to Cedar Street's storm issues. We finally got a hard number on that, so we're looking at around sixty thousand dollars to correct all the storm issues on second. And Cedar, which would really help out, I mean, I know for years now that's been a promise from staff to make that happen. So I'm pretty proud of the fact that we finally got a design and we finally got a number, so we can start working towards it next budget year. And rectify that, um. We covered the Generac system, you know, that's something that's been in the works for a while at the water plant, um, I've had to touch too much on that. Water plant's been running good, um, I think we're still bringing in four hundred and twenty gallons per minute there. Outflowing is roughly, what would you say Kyle, round, estimated around one fifty?
We're using about two hundred thousand gallons a day right now. Two hundred thousand.
Thank you.
We onboarded tag into our system with our wastewater, it came through and kind of cleaned, cleaned up all the um. P L C unit that we have at the plant there, so that's up and operational at a hundred percent now. Um, Ellie's Garden, regards to wastewater, we pulled an additional flow that had no usage in that system. Kyle and Tag, they corrected the alarm issues that we had over there, um. So those are all positives, um. Worked with the contractor with our distribution line coming off the developments, uh, we're doing that in a phased project right now. So in regards to that, we're phasing Juniper and First Street has now been completed, our distribution line is in. Uh, we've onboarded. Everybody's service line that currently resides off Juniper and First. Um, we're getting ready to make the transition off of Hemlock, we're offsite development there. Um, that's gonna be taking place next week, uh, they're also gonna be doing some offsite. Uh, collection work in regards to our wastewater system, so they're gonna be boring and bursting all the way down Third. To uh Beulah, and at that point they're gonna be making, making that connection point to our influential lift station. And that's gonna be happening in two weeks from today, um. We got bids, our A bid on the cameras for all of our assets at the park. Pretty high number, I'll share that with everybody. Via email, so that everybody from council could take a look at that, that was from D and D. Then Tyce and staff met in regards to that water rate study. Uh, we're still looking at those numbers, like Brian, you know, I mean, we had a water advisory committee, but we wanted to bring staff in with Tim and. Kind of catch Ross up to speed and let them communicate between one another. And I felt like that went pretty well, um. Overall staff has been doing a great job. Uh, our utility one, doing a great job as far as catching up to speed and training. Beautification, you know, getting the park spray for Easter, things of that nature. I think that's about all I have.
That's a lot.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
You got a lot going on.
A lot of uh. Generating bids, getting ready for the next budget, so there's a lot of contractors coming and going, looking at, you know, our infrastructure, streets. Distribution system, collection systems, uh, manhole rehabilitation, uh, I N I. So we've generated a lot of numbers and, you know, starting to get that ready to pass on to Ross.
Means things are being done.
Oh, yeah.
What we can ask. How is this um extreme rainwater conditions affecting public works?
Yeah, Kyle just informed me the other day, we brought in five hundred thousand gallons of influent. That's quite a bit, do you have any more to add to that Kyle, cause that's pretty substantial.
A lot for April, um, but we're still holding. Steady on our living levels, but number one's getting up there, this last week has hit it pretty hard. But we're still discharging till the end of this month, so I think we'll get through it.
Excellent.
Jason was telling me that they treat that water. So your treatment plant's busy treating rainwater, which. That's something that really needs to be put on the burner for. Good staff report of some sort or another, cause shouldn't be treating all that rainwater.
Yeah, when that system was developed eons ago, they made that a, a partnering system, so you have all of your storm collection. And your wastewater system. Kind of brother or sister together there, we treat it all. This kind of flaw in the design, I mean, from a, from a public works. Conceptual idea, I, I see where they were going with it, because you didn't have the ability to. Put that into storm, really, I mean, it would overflow, but uh. In regards to that subject matter, with the new development in Cedar Street, and as we move forward, we're, we're starting to collect that in a storm system. So we're, we're trying to project out in the future that we can kind of. Yeah, kind of, but kind of sway away from it a little bit, but the dollars amount, we've looked at it with um. Michaels and that's a corporation out of Salem. Millions and millions and millions of dollars that we couldn't even come close to. So, but we're doing a pretty good job and uh.
And the facility's maintenance concerns, the buildings, how's that coming along?
It's tough, because it's a scheduling conflict. You know, uh, our, our building currently is, is good aesthetically outside, um. You know, we're looking into budget for our lab upgrade for next year. Uh, which will be substantial for just overall treatment and just kind of the flow of lab work itself, it's pretty dated, um. You know, I've met. I've met with some assessors, you know, in regards to the Bingo Hall building and the concession stands. And you know, the, the, going back to last year, it was do away with them. It's, it's not a structural component, there's no, there's no value, there's no asset there other than shelter, it doesn't occupy enough people. You're kind of just putting your city at liability there of structures. I know we've looked at our parks master plan, those conceptual plans are, they're there, they're large, they're millions of dollars, you know. But you know, with discussions I had with Ross today, it's like our S D C funds have built up to, we're looking at Ross, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You know, so the, the money's there for matching funds, you know, and now having people like Ross in the places and. We should be going and looking for grants and getting, you know, starting to use and utilize that money for matching things and bonds. Yeah, let's, yeah. As far as just buildings itself, it's, they ran their life. You know, that's it. You've always heard that term, it's like you put lipstick on a pig, and it's just like, how much longer can you do it until you just, you know, correct the problem? Uh, the one asked, the one last ask I had though is that the city support me in supporting the community club. With three thousand dollars to put up the black pole of the park that was destroyed last year from the windstorm that blew the ranch down that took her down, so. If I just could have you guys' support with that, I could kind of green light that for them.
We got that.
Yeah, we're good. Just wanted everybody's blessings.
I moved money from one line item to another.
Thanks, yeah, that's, that's correct.
It's good to go.
Yeah.
All right, excellent, anything else? Excellent, thank you very much for all that, a lot of work going on at Public Works, thank you Kyle.
Can I say oh yeah?
Can you what?
They say oh yeah, they're remembered. There's two of them now, I had that's all of them, so. What we have been doing is you have seen, which I had as a project initiative, what we're working with as uh. Staff is presenting project initiatives, so a lot of things that each organization is doing. What we're gonna do is those project initiatives, which will help, I think, answer a lot of the. Where's this money going, what's this allocated for, how much is it gonna cost, is, where is it we at with this project? So those project initiatives are gonna help with answering a lot of those questions, not only for council, but for the public as well. Well, we will, in doing that, because they're included in the council minutes and the agenda and so forth, that will also present that to the community. But that will help, I believe, answer a lot of the questions, so I've been talking with staff about even past. Uh, projects of doing those project initiatives and then saying that they're completed or if it's a continuing project. And that way we can let you guys know as well as the community know where we're at with things and where the. Yeah, so that's something that we've discussed and is what we are working towards doing on a lot, on all of the projects, not just some of the projects. And I did wanna mention also, you know, I've talked about it numerous times, but I have never at any point said that there's not a speeding problem in the city of Yammill. In that study, I had to go back and look, cause I remember writing it and putting on there that those were average speeds. So, I mean, I appreciate that being reinforced, uh, but those are just the average speeds that were documented. Not actual speeds, and I had to go back to check what I wrote, that was it. We don't feel that there is not, and I personally don't feel there's not a speeding issue, there's always been a speeding issue. And pointing out while I was looking for that document, I found one that Officer Miller had done a while back for one of his classes that he had to do about. Speed in the. And he agrees, as I do, that there is a speeding problem, and it's not the issue, it's a solution to the speeding problem. And I've said before, anything that has, anyone has their ideas, please let me know. Unfortunate crash that happened today wasn't speed related, it was intersection related, and there was that fortunately a low speed. Cause there took down several injuries as a result, but it wasn't a speeding issue, it was a low speed, but intersection. That's good to get confused, they're gonna support waste stuff. If anybody has any questions about that, because it keeps getting brought up, I'd be happy to answer that.
Thank you for the clarifications, appreciate it. No more else, all right, moving on. Uh, so mayor comments, I, I want to present to council a request. Um, the planning commission is taking some leaps and bounds, and they're moving forward in creating subcommittees. They can help support them in doing the historical and economic development and all these things. And so I want to recommend that we provide a direct communication between council and planning commission. So that we can all be kind of on the same page and have some direction, I know that um, Mr. Morse. Uh, had difficulty understanding or knowing what the council is looking for, and so I wanna support him in that. And I would like to request and appoint Councilor Corrigan as a liaison for the commit council. With the planning commission, where he would attend the planning commission meetings as a, as a, not as a, a person, as a. Counselor, but as, well, as a counselor, not on the planning committee. But as a guest to the committee to help support with information. And if you both agree with that, I'd like the council to approve that to be. To be, to be.
Just for a consensus?
I just, yeah, I think a consensus would be good.
Yeah, I'm in agreement.
I'm happy to do it, Ken will have me.
Yeah, I'll be back.
Council asking. Council Dean?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're good?
Yeah.
Okay, you are appointed.
Thank you Shay.
The liaison for planning commission, thank you.
I just was scheduled, I may have to do it via Zoom sometimes, but I'll try to come and hang out as much as I can.
Sounds good, but uh, yeah, in person's good too.
And if you have questions or concerns or just wanna run something by, he's your man. So easy connection.
I won't be at the next city council meeting. I'm gonna be in LA getting a back operation at Cedar Sinai.
Oh my.
Yeah, so uh, and that day, so I really can't really, I don't think I can go on even Zoom. So maybe Shay, uh, you could kind of. I'm gonna do my darndest to uh listen in tomorrow, well, one of the other folks could kind of step up and we'll see, we'll, we'll. We'll figure that out tomorrow.
We'll support whatever you decide to do in your absence. But yeah, I hope everything goes really well for you.
It's a, it's a small, they're gonna just, you know, you know, I walk in, I walk out, hopefully.
That's the goal.
It's in regards to what Mr. Lousley brought up, um, I've spoken to. The powers that be about our S D Cs, and their recommendation is just to go up a three percent. Because we're currently, the way we stand, we're at par with communities our size.
And what is, what are the S D Cs?
Uh, system development.
I know, I know what they are, what is the charge?
Uh, I think we're roughly looking at ten sixteen five, I believe. So it's, it's common practice to just increase those three percent every year.
And are we doing that? No, so we need to do that.
That's something Ross could probably look into a little bit deep, because it's just a joke.
I think it'd be important before they start.
Something.
Thanks Jason.
January first.
January first.
And they went up by those E P I at the time. So they won't be raised again prior to the.
Until next January.
Okay, so they've been raised the maximum.
That kind of nullifies that, that May tenth date, because we have been doing our due diligence to make sure that.
So they have been increased as of January first.
And to add to that, I've also been. Waiting for legal to get back to me, even though I haven't been told, so I'm gonna make an executive decision, just. Present that next month, cause I'm twiddling my thumbs waiting for legal to get the uh, the fee schedule.
Oh.
The council, well, I think it's a good executive decision to make, that I have it, I've had it, I'm just gonna present it next, in May.
And what are we waiting on council to do with it, just?
That was the request of him to look over it, of it to be looked over.
But we haven't heard that. And that's a couple months? For one, one month? I don't remember, okay.
I do know it is.
Okay.
April's about over. But I think, say April's about over, so it could be two months, yeah.
Okay, uh, information and announcements, first Friday council meet and greet is May fifth, which is Cinco de Mayo, so that'll be fun, maybe we can. Um, have tacos or something for, for our meet and greet, uh, for first Friday. And so I will be at the next uh, May fifth, uh, first Friday council meet and greet, and I believe Council Askew, are you scheduled for May fifth?
Uh, I don't remember, probably, it's been a while since I edited the first one, so.
So I think you're up again.
Alright.
Cause every three months, right?
Yeah.
So you're up again, so you and me, first Friday, May fifth.
Got it.
And next city council meeting is May tenth at seven P M, next planning commission meeting is. Tomorrow? Tomorrow at seven P M? Six thirty P M, okay? And next water advisory committee is April twenty fifth at three P M. Y and A has a four, uh, April twenty second disaster prep meeting at two P M. And a pending one in May for disaster medical. And Henderson House has an April twenty second motorcycle ride. And I think I've got everybody's.
Yes, budget time, please Ross.
Uh, I don't, I don't, no.
Time, okay.
It's a, it's actually noticed in upper stack, I think, we said five thirty, you remember Ken?
Can you pull it up?
Yeah, I was working on that.
So budget committee, April nineteenth, which is next Wednesday.
Yes.
At.
Start time? It's five thirty, five thirty.
Is it five thirty?
You said that's what my calendar reflects it. Five thirty P M, April nineteenth.
Thank you, it's a date. Okay, and uh Henderson House, great presentation of that information, just wanna let you, um, the community know on record that. They are looking for donations for, and there is a list of donation sites that are available, and I believe this information will be online as part of the. Council packet. Right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And may I get a motion, is there anything from council?
No, would you like a motion?
No, no, yes, please.
Make a motion wager.
We are.